Good evening and welcome to the January 27, 2025 City Council Meeting. I am Mayor Ross, and tonight's meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. So tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channels. Thank you for joining us all tonight. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Watten?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Councilmember Cotton?
Here.
Councilmember Christensen? Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Ross.
I am here.
Get a full house.
Council, would you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? And Councilwoman Washington, would you please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to our first item of the regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Christensen and second by Mayor Pro Tem Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? And it's unanimous and the motion passes and the agenda is approved. Our first item under appointment is AB 25-016, the Appointment to the Arts Commission. Nicola Badenhorst has applied to fill a vacant position on the Arts Commission. She has lived in this city for eight years and has been an active community member and engaged in various committees and volunteer positions within the community. She has teaching, leadership, and management experience as well as volunteer experience with youth and events. And she would be a great addition to the Arts Commission. Council may have a motion to confirm the appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so so moved by Councilwoman Benson and the second by Councilwoman Cotton. Okay. Any discussion?
She's also a banged up pickleball player.
Oh, she really? Well, there you go. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And it's unanimous and we appreciate Nicola Badenhorst for agreeing to serve our community. And do we know whether she's online?
She's not online.
She's not online. Okay. Okay, great. The next appointment is AB 25-022, Appointment to the Parks and Events Commission. And Amanda Frame has applied to fill a vacant position on the Parks and Events Commission. She has lived in this city for over 10 years and has served on boards and commissions outside of the Snoqualmie Valley. She would like to serve her community and offer a meaningful contribution to the residents of Snoqualmie. Her background is in nonprofit and she is currently the Director of Community Outreach and Engagement for ARPA, or W A R P. She would make a great addition to the Parks and Events Commission. Council may have a motion to confirm the appointment.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Watten and second by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? And the motion passes unanimously and thank you Amanda Frame for agreeing to serve your community. And she is not online as ever. Okay, great. Final item of business in our public hearings and presentations is the 2024 Top Accomplishments. Our City Administrator Chambliss is here to present.
Can I share them? Okay, council, run through this real quick. So our top accomplishment was actually the voters that accomplished that one. And they passed the Public Safety Sales and Use Tax Levy at a 66% approval rate. And that goes to the council priority to assure a safe community and to enhance and preserve the neighborhood livability and quality of life. Second topped was the approved biennial budget and capital improvement plan. And it aligned with key priorities in public safety, economic development, capital projects, preserving critical infrastructure, and ongoing maintenance of roads, parks, trails, and public works, which basically clicked on all your priorities. Third was the Community Development Department's completion of the Comprehensive Plan, which enhances and preserves neighborhood livability and the quality of life. Fourth was our Fire Department achieving reaccreditation for another five years. They've also completed their strategic plan and responded to a record numbers of calls for service totaling 1,715. And that went to your priorities to assure a safe community, enhance and preserve the neighborhood livability and quality of life. The Police Department, total number of calls declined in 2024 by about 10%. They opened their North Bend Annex to enhance the community presence and reduce crime. They've increased their recruiting efforts with the help of HR and they are just about fully staffed. And they've also completed an assessment to serve as a guide for the department's future accreditation efforts. That goes towards assuring a safe community, enhancing and preserving the neighborhood livability and quality of life. Our IT Department upgraded the fire station's phone system, installed a new citywide VPN to improve user experience and increase remote work security, and also installed the new AV system in the council chambers, which also goes to assuring a safe community and investing in the infrastructure. The Finance Department and Human Resources successfully implemented their sections of the ERP system, which improves efficiency and accuracy of payroll and HR practices by reducing the number of paper records and minimizing manual entry and streamlining those processes, which helps to ensure fiscal transparency and operational stability and also was an investment in infrastructure. The Parks and Public Works Projects successfully completed these projects, the All-Inclusive Park, which opened the playground. The Water Reclamation Facility Phase Three Project progressed ahead of schedule. By the end of the month, we're told it's going to be 100%. 384 Sewer Sidewalk Project also has substantially completed. All that's left to do out there is a little bit of tie up some of the driveway, tie-ins and repave of the road once the weather warms up. The Kimball Creek Bridges Project finished ahead of schedule and under budget. And the Tree Equity Project planted 140 new street trees in downtown. And then we also made substantial progress on the Community Center Expansion Project with a complete design. This assures a safe community, enhances and preserves neighborhood livability and quality of life, and invests in transportation and infrastructure. We had many great events. The Parks Division installed the best winter light display to date. We drew tourists downtown and delighted residents and tourists alike. The Big Truck Day drew hundreds from around the region. And music and movies in the park are richest summer nights and is always a big hit. That also enhances and preserves neighborhood livability and quality of life, and it also encourages economic vibrancy. And finally, our Clerks Division, Public Records Management enhancements. We've adopted a new public records management policy. Laserfish Enterprise Contact Management System has been implemented. We paid for that with a grant that Dina got, just want to highlight that. And there's also a new public records request form and process with automated workflows, which increases the efficiency and accessibility for the public. That also ensures fiscal transparency, operational stability, and events in transportation and infrastructure. These are just the highlights. Come see me in the office and I will brag about these guys all day long. They did a fantastic job. And that just really glosses over the top of all the great work that they did.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions? Council Johnson?
Yeah. Like oftentimes I start off with what's the thing that I see wrong? Those are all fantastic things. I should start there. All right. But one thing that I did notice is that there isn't a whole lot under that encourage economic vibrancy. And that's because of at least one thing that I know is coming down the pike very soon out of the Planning Commission, and that relates to the retail downtown and on center. It's taken a long time because it's such a heavy lift, but they've been working really hard. They were going to try to get it out at the end of last year, but there were just a few other little tweaks they had to do. But they just forwarded it on to council at their last meeting, so that'll be coming soon.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments?
Great work.
Great, great work. Nice job. And again, we appreciate, you know, these are incredible achievements, but there was so much more that we didn't get to to mention tonight. And it's been every department and every employee have worked to make a meaningful impact in our city for residents and for our businesses. So thank you to Team Snoqualmie. So, thank you. This time, we'll provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. There will be no online public comments. Written comments are encouraged, may be submitted in person or mail or email to our cityclerk@snowqualmiewad.gov. For those joining us tonight, first ground rules would be Snoqualmie residents who are present have the right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in efficient or early manner. So therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes each. And please wait to recognize and state your name and city of residence for the record and direct your comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. So I know we have a couple public commenters here this evening, and so I invite you to go to the podium.
I'll start it off. My name is Mary Miller. I reside at 151 West Sixth Street in beautiful North Bend. That's what I need right now. It is one of my goals as mayor of North Bend to build and support healthy relationships at all levels of leadership. I come before you this evening to express my intent to continue our work in increasing connection between our two communities. The designation that comes to mind when thinking of our historical and cultural connection is this, the sister cities of North Bend and Snoqualmie. Both of our wonderful cities offer unique landscapes, immensely popular, and world-renowned opportunities for tourism and abundant outdoor recreation and adventures amongst other glowing attributes. This is what I wish to focus on tonight, however. It is my hope that all communities, whether you live in the upper or lower Snoqualmie Valley, strive to understand the vast importance of being good neighbors, being respectful to one another, despite the differences we all inevitably have, to respect the animals that we reside with, and certainly be better stewards of our incredibly precious environment. We are all in this together, sharing a remarkable home. We all know how incredibly important all of this is as it showcases an opportunity to teach our children compassion, empathy, and the ability to work together as opposed to work against each other. Please know that I will continue to do my part. In closing, I wish to thank interim City Administrator Bob Larson and Mayor Pro Tem Mark Jocelyn for once again joining me tonight. I appreciate you both so much. Thank you, City Council and Mayor, for your time tonight. I wish you all and all who love Snoqualmie Valley a wonderful and pleasant and safe week. Thank you.
Good evening, Mark Jocelyn, 425 Southeast Fifth Street, North Bend, Washington. I'm here tonight as Mayor Pro Tem of the city of North Bend. I cannot certainly speak for fellow council. I'm bending the rules slightly because I have a partner arriving at CTEC in an hour and I can't Terry. So I am speaking to an item on the agenda, the police extension of the police services contract, which is, of course, being discussed by your sister city down the street. It certainly benefits all entities to continue the relationship we have with Snoqualmie North Bend Police. And I'm hoping that you would find a way to support this in this measure tonight to allow the parties to continue being in conversation such that we can move forward together to the benefit of the, you know, safety and well-being of all of us who live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to public comment? We appreciate your being here this evening and we're looking forward to ongoing discussions and it's important to both of our communities. Thank you. Next item is the Consent Agenda, which contains approval of the City Council Meeting Minutes dated January 13, 2025, approved the Claims Report dated January 27, 2025, AB 25-013, Meadowbrook Farm Operation and Maintenance 2025 Budget. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Holloway, second by Councilwoman Washington. Is there any public comment regarding that item? Seeing none? Is there any discussion? Right. Seeing none? All those that approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And the motion passes unanimously and consent agenda is approved. Next item, First Committee Report for Public Safety is AB 25-002, Amendment to the 2019 North Bend Interlocal Agreement for Police Services. Councilwoman Watten, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. North Bend has proposed to increase the level of compensation for the first quarter of 2025 by 12.9%, while both cities continue to work on a new local agreement. Move to the bottom here. I move to approve the 2025 Renewal Interlocal Agreement for Police Services with the city of North Bend for the period January 1, 2025 through May 31, 2025, and authorize the mayor to sign. Do I have a? Thank you.
Moved by Councilwoman Watten and second by Councilwoman Christensen to approve the amendment to the North Bend ILA for Public Police Services. Is there any public comment regarding that? And actually, we just heard from two people regarding public comment. Seeing no further public comment? Do we have any discussion, council? Councilwoman Watten?
I just want to thank both administrations for coming together and working on this, as well as the police chief and the city attorney. I think we're moving in the right direction. I think that going forward, we're going to have even better relations. And this is so critical to both cities because they really, if we separate the services from the two cities, we're not going to be as responsive and responsible and, and as frugal with the tax dollars. We maximize public safety by having this arrangement. And I'm so pleased at the direction we're going. And it's going to be something that we can sustain long-term and it will benefit all of us. So thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Oh, Mayor Pro Tem Holloway?
What happens at the end of May?
City Administrator Chambliss?
Excuse me, I'm developing a little tick on my throat. So I, I, my plan is to keep you informed as our talks progress. We met again today for about an hour and a half. We set another meeting in two weeks with the finance directors to go over the proposed compensation formula and hopefully get that nailed down. As long as we're making sufficient progress towards a resolution, in May, I'll be coming back and recommend, make a recommendation at that time to continue to work to it. But if, if progress is not being made, then I think I'll have to consider what recommendations I make at that time. But right now, we are making good progress and I have no, no reason to believe otherwise that we won't get this resolved.
And I concur with that. On the amendment in Table 1, though, it goes for the full year. This agreement only goes to the end of May.
Correct. North Bend did do the text on this, I believe, and, and they did pass this at their last meeting. So if, if we do make a change, then we will, it will have to go back before them.
Get the city attorney.
Oh, yes. The, the table one was requested by North Bend, but the agreement only goes through May 31st.
Yeah, that's the discontinuity I'm picking at here. Okay. If, if they requested it, that's fine.
Any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? It's unanimous. The North Bend Interlocal Agreement Amendment is approved. Is there any further report for Public Safety Committee?
No further report. Thank you.
Any report for Community Development Committee?
No reported this time, Madam Mayor.
Is there any report for Parks and Public Works Committee?
Yeah, we were working on the rate study and our goal right now is to drive those rates down. And the Parks and Public Works staff, as well as finance, are working on a number of strategies to get those rates lower. That would include leveraging more bonds to, to pay for projects that are, that are going forward into the future. And I think we really need to consider, this is just me speaking personally now, is I think we really need to look at getting those rates as, as low as we can. Because the difference between where the rates that we arrived at are and the history is pretty, pretty, pretty big. And it's, it's, at least in my opinion, not an appropriate way for us to finance a long-term project, long-term projects like the ones that we're seeing. But, but we'll discuss that more when we come back to you with, with the finalized version. But just trying to give you a heads up on what you're going to be looking at.
Thank you. Next item under Finance Administration Committee, we have AB 25-010, Snoqualmie Design and Construction Standards Task Order. Mayor Pro Tem Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
This agenda bill item is associated with a contract and task order with Fertite Incorporated Engineering to create a set of Snoqualmie, City of Snoqualmie, design and construction standards based on Snoqualmie Ridge, which could be used citywide on all development projects and city capital improvement projects through a future update of Snoqualmie Municipal Code. And the action is, where did the action go? It's up there. Or sorry. No, no. It's a different one. Yeah, I'm confused why, well.
The motion's at the top.
Motion's at the top. I'm confused why we are using it to perform a motion. Move to approve contract and authorize work, design, and construction standards by Fertite Incorporated. May I have a second?
Second. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Holloway and second by Councilor Christensen for the Snoqualmie Design and Construction Standards Task Order. And is any public comment regarding this item? Seeing no one in the council chambers for public comment. Council, any discussion? Councilwoman Washington?
Yeah, so this just goes to the budget piece of it. So I, from, from a math perspective, I see where we're getting the 156, 454. So we take the appropriated amount, the, all the, you know, the 2.468. We subtract out the 995, 444, okay? And then the 1.3, but I guess I don't understand how we're getting there. Like, I understand the math, but are you, are we saying that the 2.468, that's what was appropriated? We have an outstanding value, current value of the contract, roughly under a million. And then there was another 1.3 appropriated? Is that, where is that coming?
So what you're looking at is the remainder. It's what's available after you take that total appropriation. You subtract out what we know of open contracts and also internal service charges. And then after we take out the final value of this contract, 156,000, we still have 1.3 million remaining for the biennium. So you explained it perfectly right. I think it's just that last number. It's, it's what's remaining after we take out that contract encumbrance and this contract.
Just a quick follow-up. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So the current contract value, what's been spent, is that the 995?
Well, we haven't spent very much at all in services, as this is the first month. So no, that's not what we've spent. But those are contracts that we've agreed to in the, in 2024 and 2023, anything outstanding that we are likely to spend during 2025.
Okay, so the 995 is spoken for.
It's, there you go.
Perfect. Then what's the 1.3?
At the very bottom? That's just math. So you take the 2.5 million, you subtract out the 995,000, then you subtract out the 156,000.
And that's how we get the, okay, got it. Okay, okay.
And we have Community Development Director Emily Arteche. If you have any questions, Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes, I just was wondering, so this is basically to bring all of the, the previous engineering standards up. I mean, is it true that they haven't been updated since 1980?
Yeah, we've been essentially operating off of the Snoqualmie Ridge standards. And there's Snoqualmie Ridge 1, there's Snoqualmie Ridge 2, there's Kimball Creek. They all use a slightly similar variation of those standards.
And are those, excuse me, follow-up question? Are those, is there anything? I mean, obviously they're out of date, but unsafe or that needs to be upgraded safety-wise for, with all this? It was everything from, you know, sidewalks and curbs and.
I'd say they're, they're the best practices that we've been using. And, you know, they're the best engineering practices.
Okay, so, so no big changes perhaps going forward?
Yeah, no big changes. You'd see this, the preferred set of design standards that we're using for streets carry through.
Yep, and fire hydrants and everything else, so, okay.
Council Johnson?
I was actually just wondering if effectively part of this work would be to make sure that what was eventually proposed as the new design standards for the city code would just double check to make sure that whatever was in place in Snoqualmie Ridge 1 and 2, that those documents are up to the proper various standards and stuff. So there'd just be kind of that double check.
Correct, yeah.
Whatever ends up as being in the code would be those things but updated just as appropriate.
Correct, yeah. And, and again, this isn't proposing a code amendment. This is just the research.
Right.
Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tem Holloway?
Cam's question. Why is the format of this agenda bill really confusing?
They're all different now.
Yeah, it's a new, new format.
The format for the.
I believe this is the first time you're seeing the new process.
That was the test, test guinea pig. Guinea pig.
How'd it go?
How many iterations do we have, City Clerk, or maybe to get it right? Yeah, we were testing out hyperlinks and copying and pasting things and the sequence of approvals that we had to go through and how to get it back sent to me if I wanted to make a change. It was.
I think it were great. Would there be additional training?
Do we, do we try it in papyrus?
You try it in what?
Try it in papyrus. Do we, do we?
Okay, but moving forward, this will be the format? Okay.
Yes, it is.
Is there a vote on that?
No, staff gets to do this. City, they're allowed to decide how to do.
Any other questions regarding their agenda bill?
All of my questions are in Comic Sans.
Council Johnson?
So as we discussed in, in committee, this does seem sort of like more a community development-y kind of thing. And that it was, it was a little awkward for that to, for this to come through FNA. I don't, I personally have much more to say about this. It's something that I've been wanting to do for a long time. I think that I'm not alone in that. So I, I'm fine to move forward with it, but just the, the mechanics of that, I think, are of note of where it should come from, where it should go through, future reference. I don't necessarily need to send this back to committee unless the council thinks there's some, something that Community Development specifically needs to look at in this particular case, but just in general, want to point that out.
Thank you. Councilwoman Washington?
Yeah, I've actually had a lengthy discussion with Director Arteche and I'm, I'm very comfortable with this. I think maybe going forward, before this, you know, for the value, obviously, it's got to go to FNA. I think we do walk it through Community Development. I think we're kind of all on board with that, right? Just to kind of get a second set of eyes on it. And then because of the fiscal piece of it, the budgetary piece of it, obviously, it's going to go to FNA, but as it sits now, I'm, I'm completely fine with it.
Mayor Pro Tem Holloway?
That may be worthy of a little clarification. So when we exceed the purchasing value, it has to come to council. Doesn't have to go to FNA. Well, all the agenda bills eventually go through FNA. But FNA is, is not the approval body of purchases beyond the purchasing limit. But F and A is, is not the approval body of purchases beyond the purchasing limit of the director. The council is. So, just because it went beyond that purchasing authority doesn't mean it only goes to F and A. Okay, it should go to the appropriate committee of that responsibility. Okay, of that scope. So, but didn't want to hold this up. Talked to you, did the appropriate thing of checking, make sure everything's okay. But I did want to, I kept it off the consent so that if there were any issues, we could discuss it and, and shift gears and get back to square one where we can get this right. But I don't think that's necessary in this case.
Right. Any other comments? Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, just one last thing on that point is that because what the intent is, is for this to get the ball rolling, this doesn't have design elements that are ready to be codified. Hasn't gone through Planning Commission, which I'd assumed that it, it would since there's going to be ordinances involved here. Yeah, so, again, I don't think that at this point it needs to be held up to go back to committee, but all of those other things that will fall from this probably should go through CDC.
Right. Any other comments, questions? CNN, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? It's unanimous, unanimous, and the Sukome Design and Construction Standards Task Order is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further report.
All right. Next item is Council Retreat Planning Discussion. Mayor Potem Holloway, would you please help lead the discussion? I think we're, at F and A, we talked a little bit about some dates and then also initial topic.
My dates? Well, and so in part, in first, the thinking is we might push this back a little from where we usually do this. We're kicking off activity on strategic planning. Want to get that into a roll and then kind of bring that into the council retreat. So, we're talking a couple of dates. Refresh me on the dates we talked. It was March.
21st or 28th?
21st, 21st or 28th. And one day. Okay, so just want to check with everybody. You know, check your calendars, March 21st, 28th, which would be best. This may be a homework assignment versus a.
You want to answer now?
If you got an answer now, great.
Yeah, either's fine.
Yeah.
Either's fine.
Either's fine. I saw your hand up. Do you have any, you have a conflict?
Not on those two specific dates.
Okay.
But don't move on either.
Okay.
I have a conflict on the 21st. I would, yeah, 28th is ideal for me.
28th works for you?
You have conflict on both of them?
No, no, 28th, 21st is ideal.
Any ejection to the 28th?
I would prefer the 28th to the 21st myself.
Yep, you're on the same.
When else time with the 28th?
Well, Councilmember Johnson?
I mean, I have to take the day off, but I can do that.
28th?
Yeah. I can do that.
Great.
It's not a family birthday or.
No, a family.
Or anniversary.
March 28th.
March 28th.
Okay.
And well, as we get closer to the date, we'll start to flesh that out.
We think, we're thinking Hawaii?
No.
And then our City Administrator has some additional comments.
Oh, okay, that's perfect.
There's a part two to this. We also are going to, we're going through a RFP process to select the consultant to do this work. And would like a couple of members of council to participate on the committee that reviews the RFPs and makes the selection. I don't know how you want to figure that out, arm wrestle at the podium or two or three, whatever you feel is, is best.
It could be an F and A.
I might have an opinion. Any other council members?
I can participate.
I'm okay with Louis participating.
Okay. Louis and I will just say that.
Great.
I'm okay with you doing it, yeah.
Thank you for your vote of confidence.
Wasn't that so much?
Any other comments or? Right. We are moving on. So, next item is Mayor's Update. First of all, congratulations to our Administrator Mike Chambliss. He's recently, recently notified that he is receiving the credentialed manager designation from ICMA, which is International City or County Management Association. Mike is one of over 1,300 local government management professionals currently credentialed through the ICMA voluntary credentialing program. And their mission is to advance professional local government through leadership management innovation. And he brings, you know, many years of experience as a senior manager, has the degree in related field and demonstrated a commitment to high standard of integrity and lifelong learning. And we really appreciate him stepping up as a city administrator, and congratulations. I'm sure there'll be a plaque coming later, making like formal pictures. Thank you. I went to the Mayor's Exchange in Olympia this past week, and it's always a great place to, you know, meet other mayors and kind of talk about what interesting, interesting things are going on in their cities and then also talk about common issues. And part of that, we received a presentation from the Criminal Justice Training Center Director Monica Alexander. So, she oversees all the training academies for the state. And we were all very happy to see her. You know, they, they expanded the basic law enforcement academy by adding two or three additional academies throughout the state. So, not everyone has to go to Buren anymore, which then opened up spaces so we can get our police officers there sooner, whereas in the past, it'd be like eight-month waiting. Now, it might be two months, maybe at tops. But also helps other people that are interested in being in the police force that maybe they lived in Vancouver, Washington. There's now a facility there. So, people don't have to leave their families for a whole week for like during the eight weeks or whatever period that is. So, so it's kind of benefited the whole state as a whole. So, it was a great presentation. And then we also had a legislative session update by their Government Relations Group. They also provide an online update every Friday. So, if you look at your ADBC emails, you can actually sign up to listen to what's happening on Olympia every noon, every Friday. So, which brings me to, there's also ADBC City Action Days, which is in next month. And that's a, council members can go. It's a great opportunity to meet other council members from different cities. And they always have really interesting topics to follow. And then you can go to the Hill and meet your legislators. So, if you are interested in attending that, please reach out to Dina. She can register you for that. So, that is all I have for now. Next item is Commission Committee and Commission Liaison Reports. Do we have any council liaison reports? Councilor Cotton?
Yes, last week was the Sukome Valley Health slash Hospitals Board of Commissioners meeting. And just to reiterate, the, the two big projects they have going forward is, of course, the new ambulatory center up there by their main campus, which is going to be a $110 million project. About five years of construction, I believe, that will include additional ambulatory services. It will have eventually a surgery center. Also, some things for the community as far as restaurant, climbing wall, gym, things like that. So, they're still in the, getting the, the land acquisition things squared away, but progressing forward fairly quickly with that. They're also looking, I think their eventual plan is to put a controlled stoplight at that intersection when construction is, is going forward with that. Their second project is the North Bend Clinic. So, they've got the permits all submitted to the City of North Bend. That's going to be opening, or except for at the latest, November 1st, but ideally, they want to get it open September 25th of 2025, excuse me, so that we don't have people bypassing SVH to go to other medical facilities not in the valley. So, that's the two things that they've got going. And they're already, even though their, their hub is like five years away from being completed, they're already recruiting doctors, MDs that are specialists and surgeons.
Excellent. Thank you.
Oh, one last thing.
Yep.
Reclaim, Jen Kirk over at Reclaim has offered up, once the cold weather emergency sheltering was done with, that if any council members would like to get a tour of the Reclaim facility. I know a couple of folks have already gone through that, so, but please let me know, and then I can arrange and coordinate times and stuff with, with Jen.
Thank you. Any other? Mission updates? Councilwoman?
Thank you. So, while everybody else seemed to be at work here on Wednesday night, I was the default representative to the Sukome Valley governmental association. And I, I, my opening remarks were all the important committees were meeting on Wednesday night, and I was the sole representative to that. Amy Biggs, the Director of Sukome Valley Transportation, gave a presentation. I think the, the big takeaway from that is we need to have input through SVT that gets passed along to King County and ultimately the other entities that help support it because it's an agglomeration of funds. And I would encourage you that if you'd like to see more public transportation options to write a letter in support of SVT that they can include. I've done that over the last few years in my professional capacity because it's important for, for my clients to make it to where they need to go. And a second thing, too, is the community transit vans. I have two in my parking lot that service the down, or the, the, the Upper Valley. And that's through Metro. And if you haven't used that service, you know, when we have buses that don't run very often, it's a great option. You can sign up. It's the community transit vans. And it only costs $2.75 per ride, and that's through Metro. And we have that available here in the valley. And I've been really thrilled because this month, I'm seeing the vans now move in and out of the parking lot during the day when they sat for about the first few months. So, pay attention to that. And then I did report on our request for quotation, request for qualifications, RFQ, for affordable housing, workforce housing situation. And that's 9033. In my understanding, I heard you've got a couple applicants to it, so that's exciting, too. Thank you.
Thank you. I would state on the, on your comment regarding Sukome Valley Transit, I'm on the Regional Transit Committee, which is basically kind of advisory to Metro. And so, I listed that as one of our priorities was to help fund more services for SVT. I'm especially providing services as the transit centers open up in Redmond and even Issaquah. Because currently, there's, if you go to Carnation, there's not a Metro bus that goes from there to Redmond, and there's no connection. And so, that would help free up any type of parking spots, you know, in Redmond and also get people from Carnation to Redmond. So, we asked for additional funding doing that. Is there any other commission or committee reports? All right, well, that's the end of our agenda. Now, we're moving on to Executive Session. And so, tonight, we have an executive session pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I to discuss four items with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to potential litigation. And it will last approximately one hour. One hour?
The hour?
Yes, it did. 60 minutes. Those attending would be City Attorney Dina Burke, City Administrator Mike Chambliss, Captain Horacey, Community Development Director Arteche, Finance Director Dubertay, and HR Manager Kim Johnson. Is there anyone else that I'm missing that left off? Okay. So, no actions anticipated following conclusion of the executive session. Council will in, including also Chief Bailey. No actions anticipated following conclusion of the executive session. Council will adjourn directly from the executive session and not return to open session. The City Clerk will be informed of the concluding time, which we reflected in the meeting minutes. And so, we will be ending this online session and not returning to it this evening. And so, it's 7:46, and we anticipate that we will be done. We probably need a five-minute break, so, because we'll stay in the council chambers. And so, probably by 8:50, we should be done. Any questions? Right. With that, we will adjourn to our executive session. Thank you.